Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll call this meeting of the Arizona State Board of Education to order at 1:34. Director Williams, roll call, please.
Just one minute, President Arducci. I need to make sure that it's fully live streaming.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one minute, President Arducci. I need to make sure that it's fully live streaming.
You're live.
Great, thank you. If you want to call the meeting to order again, President Arducci.
You bet. It's 1:34, and I call the meeting of the Arizona State Board of Education to order at that time. Thanks. Roll call, Alicia.
Thank you, President Arducci. Member Baker.
Present.
Thank you. Member Broussard.
Present.
Member Burton.
Present.
Dr. Core.
Present.
Superintendent Hoffman.
Present.
Member K. Dr. Mack.
Present.
Dr. Robbins. Member Ruiz.
Present.
Member Wellborn.
Present.
President Arducci.
Here.
Arducci. You have a quorum. But President Arducci?
Here. Can't hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
You sounded uncertain if you were actually here or not, Luke. I heard a question mark after your response.
Just kind of figuring that out for myself. Thank you, everybody, for coming to our second board meeting of the week. Appreciate it. We'll have a call to the public on item number one of our agenda. This is time for the public to comment on items on today's general session. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. Director Williams.
Thank you, President Arducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members of the board. For the record, I would like to state that the board did receive, and board members did receive, a letter from ASA, a letter from Guppy Mac, and a letter from ASBA. There are three speakers on Agenda Item One for today. First up, we have Melissa Boydston, Dr. Melissa Boydston, followed by Mark Jornstad. Melissa?
Melissa has not joined yet.
Okay. Great. Let's move on to Mark Jornstad, followed by Letizia Vazquez. Mark?
Second. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, sir.
President Arducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members of the board, my name is Mark Jornstad, Executive Director of the Arizona School Administrators. First, thank you for your continuing work on behalf of Arizona students and families. You've had challenging agendas recently, and your work is really valued. I will address your task today as you endeavor to decide which schools should be designated below average based upon the clearly flawed data from assessments administered last spring and conditions not conducive to reflecting actual learning of Arizona students. Given the shaky foundation on which this decision must be made, ASA contends that Option Three has the least potential for mischaracterizing AZ schools and is based on solid work by ADE and SBE staff. The data from 2021 lacks validity and reliability. Tens of thousands of students were not assessed, clearly hindering an accurate determination of growth, a particularly important factor in grades three through eight. Our Native American schools were unable to test thousands of their students as they operated under tribal government closure orders. It ill suits the state board to knowingly approve a label for those schools that clearly does not reflect the majority of their students. Prudent caution would dictate that assigning a label to schools on the basis of inaccurate data will lead to many unintended consequences. Doubling down on this action by adding hundreds of schools will amplify the damage to teacher retention, school and community morale, and potential misguided decision-making by bodies that utilize the list. We don't designate students for services without abundant data, so let's apply the same care to designating our schools. Please follow the famous dictum of the medical profession. First, do no harm. Option Three comes closest to this sage advice. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you, Mark. Next up, we have Letizia Velquez, and then we'll go back to Melissa Boydston, if she's available. Letizia?
It looks like Letizia just dropped off.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Is Melissa Boydston available?
She's not.
Okay. President Arducci, would you like us to move to Item Two or wait?
Let's kind of move to Item Two unless, well, let's wait 30 seconds or so to see if they're trying to reconnect. If you get an indication of the reconnect, let's do that.
Okay.
Further?
President Arducci, I don't see anyone else reconnecting.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to Item Number Two then, and then I guess if they want to provide written comments to Alicia, they can. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
Right. Thank you. Item Number Two is a presentation, discussion, and possible action of the criteria modeling to identify schools for the school year 2021 that demonstrate a below-average level of performance. I'm going to turn some time over to Director Williams, and I think it's essential that we appreciate that we are under a legislative deadline of November 1st to provide this information, and also taking into consideration the discussion that we had on Monday, the work that has been accomplished by all of the stakeholders thus far in presenting, including our staff and ADE. And I think if we look at this carefully and come to a fair and reasonable decision as to what we are trying to accomplish, we'll be able to get a motion on the table for one of the presented options, and hopefully a quorum of the board supporting it so that we can move forward in time to present the information as needed. Alicia, I'll turn some time over to you.
Thank you, President Arducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members. Melissa, if you could pull up the PowerPoint presentation. It's labeled October 27th. Perfect. Thank you. Members, as you are aware, we started this conversation on Monday, at Monday's meeting, and through that conversation, board members, directed board staff to work on additional options for the board to consider in order to identify below-average performing schools pursuant to House Bill 2402. Next slide, please. I worked with Wendy yesterday, for the majority of the day yesterday. Her team started work on the board's additional options on Monday, so thank you to Wendy and her team for assisting board staff with some of the total numbers that board members will see today. Just a note of caution, the total numbers presented in these slides represent a preliminary count of schools. Once the board makes a determination, ADE will go through and validate and make sure that all the totals are absolutely positively correct prior to releasing the identification of below-average performance. School impact counts are taken from the Component Public File. Therefore, Arizona Online Instruction Schools are not captured in any of the total school number counts. And that is because 2402, when the department has to release the component scoring, AOI schools are not included in that Component Scoring Public File. And since the public file was used for all of the different school counts in the three options, you will see numbers that are, well, specifically for Option Three, you will see numbers that are lower than the numbers that were in Monday's presentation, because Monday's presentation did include AOI schools. If the board does choose Option Three, the board will need to determine the bottom count for the 9-12 model, whether that's 15 or 30. And then there's an option for including AOI schools as well. Just note that if the board includes AOI schools with Option Three, that AOI schools will not be identified in the public file. Board staff will work with the department to just create a separate list for AOI schools. Next slide, please. Okay, so here are the four options that are before the board today. Options Two, One and Two come from Monday's board meeting. So Option One is utilizing the public file, formally identifying schools with below-average performance on any component indicator as below-average performance. So for example, if School A shows to be below average in proficiency, in the proficiency component, then they would be identified as below-average performance because of that, any terminology. Option Two, utilizing the public file, formally identify schools with below-average performance on all component indicators, except EL and bonus as below-average performance. EL and bonus, first bonus, it just didn't make sense to include bonus when you're looking at components. In EL, there was a significant amount of schools that didn't meet the N-count for that component, so that component was left out. However, in this scenario, if the school is below average in all of the components, all of them, that if a school is below average on all of the components that is associated with that school model, then they will be identified as below average. Option Three are the staff recommendations from the October 25th State Board of Education meeting. If you recall, those recommendations have proficiency and growth calculated for K-8, proficiency and CCRI calculated for 9-12, and alternative 9-12, and then non-typical sees A. Both of those equations together, and then it's weighted based upon the number of students that that school serves in the K-8 and 9-12 grade bands. Option Four is a combination of any of the above options. Next slide, please. Option One, again, school counts do not include AOIs. Option One, utilizing the public file, formally identify schools with below-average performance on any component indicator as below-average performance. Because we're using the public file, which again, the public file is the file that the department is using to meet the component requirement in 2402, these components would be highlighted in purple. Total number counts in this slide represent the number of schools who would be formally identified as below-average performance to meet House Bill 2402. Option Two, again, Option Two is not including AOIs because we're utilizing the public file. Option Two, utilizing the public file, formally identify schools with below-average performance on all component indicators as below-average performance schools. As I stated previously, the EL component was not included because not all schools meet the N-count. Because we're utilizing the public file that the department is using for the component scoring pursuant to 2402, the public file will identify schools with below-average performance on all components by highlighting them green in the public file. Because of the number of components needed to meet all, no alternative schools would be identified as below-average performance. The total school counts in this slide represent the number of schools who would be identified as below-average performance if the board supports Option Number Two. Next slide, please, Melissa. Option Number Three is what was presented to the board at Monday's board meeting. Again, Option Three did change a little bit from Monday's meeting. At the Monday's meeting, I was presenting on Option Three in the mathematical equations as if we were not using the public file. In this option, utilizing the public file, formally identify schools as below-average performance using the rules provided. Schools identified by Option Three will be highlighted in the public file by the corresponding.
Alicia, I think you froze.
No.
Alicia, could you back up where, until after you started with a public file? Utilizing a public file, please.
Sure. Sure. So utilizing the public file, Option Three would formally identify schools as below-average performance using the rules provided in Item 5B from Monday's meeting. Schools identified by Option Three will be highlighted in the public file by the corresponding color and formally identified as below-average performance to meet House Bill 2402. Please note that only K-8 schools identified by the K-8 Rules One and Two would be formally identified as below-average performance. This is because the public file does not contain AOI schools. Again, as I stated previously, if the board decides to go with Option Three, the board will also have to make a determination on what the bottom count number will be for 9-12, and the options are 15 and 30. For this particular slide, the bottom of 15 for 9-12 was utilized, and the board will have to determine if they want to include AOI schools. And then these next two slides just represent the Option Three rules as presented for Monday's meeting. Melissa, you could just go back to the, maybe to Option One, and we can start with Option One and have a discussion on Option One, President Arducci, or if there's a different way you would like to handle discussion, just let us know, and we can get to the correct slide for the board's discussion.
Alicia?
Yes.
Have you been talking, and I'm just losing you, or is anybody else on Zoom losing Alicia's talk? So is it just me?
It might be, Luke. I was able to track.
So was I.
Okay, I am going to close my video for a while, and hopefully I'll be able to continue to hear you.
Great. So President Arducci, how would you like to handle discussion? Do you want to go option by option, or do you just want to open it up for discussion?
I think my preference, and my preference is to actually go option to option. However, one thing I'd like to suggest is I'm looking at Option Three. Maybe I can continue to talk, and you can see me talk. I'm looking at Option Three, and I'm looking at it pretty simplistically with respect to the numbers that fall within each option. And I looked at Option One, Two, and then Three, and One, One, and I'll use clearly layman's terms here. Option One indicated to me that you get, if you fall down in one component indicator, you get dinged. And I don't mean ding in a negative way. It just means that we're finding that below average, okay? Because none of this is supposed to be dinging. And you look at Option Two, it's a different form of the, what happens with the component indicators to put you into below average. Here, and I'll restate what we said on Monday, that the placement of below average is not to be derogatory in any way. It's to identify so that assistance can be provided from any resources that we may have. That's the whole purpose of what we're doing here. I look at Option Three, and I look at the numbers, and I look at the numbers, and I see some reasonableness to identifying what we are saying as below-average performance in those numbers based upon the information that has been provided to us. So I think if we handle option by option and answer the questions that people have with respect to why the option is not a viable option to move forward, I think that might be the best way to go. And I'll always go to what Dr. Core suggested several meetings ago and continues to say, let's find a way, yes, to get this done today so that we can comport with the requirement that we have something done by November 1st. And I'll also start with, very much appreciate all the overtime extra that this has caused, and you guys have put in since we directed such on Monday, and ADE has put in. So Alicia, let's go option by option and board member by board member with respect to the specific option. One other thing that I'd like to suggest be done, I know that we have several board members that actually represent an area such as the charter system, et cetera. If in fact there is a specific concern with respect to that area, I'd like for the board to hear that, and this way we can actually make sure that that area is taken care of. Now, within this regard, however, the comments regarding the charter should actually be from the charter representative and go from there. So if we can, if we can, I'm getting information, this is my internet connection is unstable today, so I have no idea why. So if I drop off, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Core. But those are my initial thoughts in the process. You know, what we should be doing here should be looked at by all who are involved as being helpful to the system, not derogatory to our entire public school system. So Alicia, I will turn it over to you to go option by option, member by member, and let's start with Option One and go from there.
Okay, so we have Option One on the slide right now. As a reminder, Option One for members on the phone is utilizing the public file, formally identify schools with below-average performance on any component indicator as below-average performance. It looks like I have all the members up on my screen, so you can unmute yourself or put your hand up, and I can call on you, or you can start talking. Dr. Core?
Look at me using technology all by myself, raising my hand. I had the opportunity to take a look at the video from Monday's meeting, which obviously I was not there at. And, you know, I believe I understand some of the viewpoints of my colleagues, and I'll say that, again, my my level of respect for my colleagues on this board has never been higher, the way in which they've kind of articulated concerns, it was just superior. I'd also thank the work of Alicia and your team and team from the department to pull all this together on very short notice. All that being said, I'm going to channel Mark Jorgensen and some of his comments. I think at this point, our goal has really got to be to do the least harm to the system. I see no value in huge numbers of schools being identified as below average, given the circumstances in which those assessments were given by the schools and taken by the students. We want to do that in the classroom. We want to consciously identify all the below-average students and kind of highlight them in some way. I have profound respect for Member Ruiz and his desire to make sure that support and comes with whatever option is chosen. I think that has got to be explicit in our final motion. But no need to get me on each of the options. I'm pretty firmly in Option Three, as I sit here right now, and I appreciate the opportunity to chime in.
Thank you. Superintendent Hoffman?
President Arducci, Vice President Core, board members, I'm actually going to echo what Vice President Core was just saying as well. I've had more time to study and reflect and had some conversations with stakeholders since our Monday board meeting. And I think one thing we also need to be really clear about is that there are no, there are no definite supports that come with this list. We do not have any, this is not going to be sent to any federal agency. It's not, it's not currently tied to any of our decision-making at ADE and how federal funds are allocated. So we really don't know how this list will be used by the state legislature, whether that's to add supports or in ways that could potentially be punitive down the road. So for these reasons, I do think that, as we were saying, you know, being really laser-focused on which schools are, you know, have, instead of saying it's this massive list of schools I did think to be more targeted. And I do want to thank the organizations ASA, Guppy Mac, and ASBA for their letters that clearly outlined where they're coming from and their concerns, and they all indicated that their preference would be for Option Three, and so I just want to make sure I'm standing with them as well in representing our public school system, and I think that they had very, very good rationale in their letters as well. So that's where I stand today.
Thank you, Superintendent Hoffman. Next person who was up is Member Ruiz.
President Arducci, Superintendent Hoffman, and members, also want to just, you know, thank the staff for all the hard work. There's a lot. Also, you know, fellow board members, this is not easy stuff. You know, as I read through the materials, I read through the, when I see an issue, I try to step back and go, what was this trying to accomplish, and what are we trying to do? And when HB 2402 passed, it was for the purposes of pausing letter grades. Well, the only reason for a letter grade is it has accountability, and accountability has consequences that go with it. So the legislative intent was not to have consequences, if you will, from this past year. Why? Because extraordinary events that have impacted our society, our state, learning. And but at the same time, there was this second portion put in, and sometimes be careful what you ask for, because then you may get it. And that was, you know, but then identify the below-average schools. And within that, you know, the tenet of do no harm, and I would like to see no harm done to any school. If we do harm to one school, it's still, we did harm. So here's kind of where I'm going to offer a proposal here, is that we target the minimal number of schools. However, the options work out here, but the minimal number of schools. But, and we provide that data, but that within our report that we would offer three caveats. The first one is that the data is incomplete. Second, that the data cannot be used for punitive purposes. And that third, that And that third, that COVID-19 had a disproportional impact on low income communities, comma, minority communities, comma, and EL students. I think that, that gets us to where we need to, to get to, nobody wants to, the realities are, if we put a list out, it's going to be 60% of the schools in Arizona are going to be on this list, nobody wants to see that. But we have to provide a list, and if we are, it should be the minimum, minimum number. And then if we have to provide that list that we offer within our explanation or our report, these three different caveats, and with that, I can get there.
Thank you, Member Ruiz. To your last point of the different caveats. That information is, is presented in the public file under, Wendy, is it like a please read or read first? It's clearly identified as the first page of the, of the, of the public file.
Alicia, thank you, President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, Board Members and guests. Yes, on all our documentation this year, any public reporting on the how to page, we've put cautions about the COVID impact on any of our data. We could strengthen that, we'll go back and look at it again, but it's pretty strong. If you've seen some of our other files, files already, such as the assessment file, but we will revisit it just to make sure it's just as strong as you choose or feel like it should be. We had given you a mockup back in September, you could, you could look at that again as well. But yes, it is there and we will do that.
President Narducci, if I could just follow up.
Please do.
Okay, President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members. Yeah, I, I understand that, and I remember seeing that information, but I'm assuming that there's going to be a cover letter that goes out on this report. And in that cover letter, that's where I'd like to see those three caveats. So it's, it's really clear, it's not in a report that, you know, I don't know, maybe ends up being 50 pages long and it's lost someplace. That the clear intent on that cover letter that we sent is, has these caveats in there. And I think that way we, we get to do no harm and then do our duty and get this thing, the report done.
Understood. Thank you, Member Ruiz. Next up, we have Member Baker.
President Narducci, members of the board, Dr. Core exactly expressed my sentiments, so I won't waste anybody's time by repeating it. I think we have to do the job that we have to do. And frankly, we really don't have any control over how people treat the, the, the final product. We only have control over what we do, and I am strongly supportive of option three. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Baker. Do any other board members wish to state their, oh, Member Broussard.
I apologize for this dog next to me, but I want to echo everything that ASA, ASBA, GUPY MAC presented. I really have a problem with presenting a list of over 700 schools. I know that whatever list we give is going to generate discussion as to how well we are doing as, as an industry of education and I, I'm, I'm all about full transparency, but this, this data, this incomplete data in a year of COVID is not the year for us to be submitting this list because it's not, it's not an accurate take on what happened in the classroom or at our schools. So I strongly suggest and support option three. As well as the 7% for traditional 912 and omitting AOIs.
Thank you, Member Broussard. Member Wellborn, I received your question in the chat, but for future, okay. Board members, just for future reference, please don't put anything in the chat because then, because this is a public meeting, then we have to go through, we have to collect all that chat and make sure that it's available for the public, so. I will just read the chat for the public. Member Wellborn asked to have Member Baker repeat his option choice, as she did not hear it, and then Member Baker responded to Member Wellborn and said, option three. So, thank you. Member MAC.
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members, I also support option three. I think we're, we need to just be fulfill and comply with the legislative intent and then, and again, I would like to emphasize Superintendent Hoffman's point, we do not know, you know, there's nothing tied to this currently. So with that in mind, and then the other thing is to keep in mind all the other reports that we have coming out and all the other data that is coming out regarding EL, regarding, you know, all the other aspects that we heard about earlier this week. And so with, you know, with all that in mind, definitely I'm supporting option three.
Thank you, Member MAC. Member Kay also has her hand raised, Member Kay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Member Kay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First of all, President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members. I apologize, I'm having technical difficulties, I've logged in and out and I cannot get my video to turn on. So I apologize for not being on camera, first of all. Second, I, before I start, I do just want to clarify, I know it was just an example, but I am sitting in the charter operator seat on the board and I want to make sure that there's no misconception. I don't have a charter district perspective on this when I view accountability. And most of the, the issues that are brought before the board, I look from a statewide perspective. So any of my concerns that I am stating or what I'm supporting is really from a statewide perspective charter district. Our public school students. So with that, I do, I, I missed Mr. Jornstadt's public comments, but I did read all of the public comment that came in, and I would like to say I wholeheartedly agree with a number of points in there. Starting with what our traditional and charter schools have been through during COVID. I mean, to, to say that our efforts have been heroic is an understatement. I work with 26, 28 building principals, I communicate with them weekly, have through, all throughout COVID, sometimes more than weekly. And their efforts over the past two years have been extraordinary, I know what's going on throughout all of our schools. And if you talk to just about any educator, they'll say this year is even more difficult. For different reasons, but it's even more difficult. Because we're dealing with the aftermath and all of the barriers and the precursors to learning. Things like the mental health issues, increased attempted suicides, anxiety, depression, food insecurity, economic insecurity, and those things we know existed prior to COVID. And they're exacerbated by COVID. I think my struggle throughout this whole conversation is the notion of putting any school on a list. Member Ruiz said, you know, we, we talk about do no harm, but I wonder what's the acceptable number of schools to do some harm, because nobody wants to be on that list. And I really believe that despite the valiant efforts, best efforts of the board staff, the ATAC, we don't have a, a, a meaningful way to really accurately capture what occurred last year. We don't have the data for it, we don't have a way to collect it, and I don't think we have a way to interpret it. So at the very base level, I go back to the board resolution and the decision to encourage a pause on letter grades due to the pandemic. So that I am starting with a base level of struggle. Because I fundamentally do not believe we should be identifying these schools. Now we have a legislative obligation as a board to do so, so then what is the next best option? Is it to make the list as small as possible? Do the least harm, probably. So if we jump ahead or if we comment on option one, two, and three, I would lean more towards three. That said, I still have some questions and some, I don't know if they're concerns, they're questions at this point on option three. And it hadn't occurred to me, but if there is a way to do something like Member Ruiz suggested and make a stronger statement somehow about the realities of the data. We heard Dr. Peter Benner say that this data hasn't been used for accountability purposes and shouldn't, and should be used for things other than accountability. I mean, every single presentation we heard had that strong caution. And I know it's in the public file, but if there's a way for the board to make a stronger statement that we recognize the data is flawed. And I think some of the work that we did in option three demonstrates further that the data is flawed. I, we've all stated that punitive measures shouldn't, this should not be used in a punitive way. But as several board members have stated, we don't know what the outcome is, we don't know what the intention, we don't know how it will be used. So if we could reiterate a stance that we don't want to see this used punitive way. And that we recognize that COVID did have a disproportionate impact because we don't know who's on the list in option three. But if history serves, it's very likely our poorest communities, our communities of color, and our communities that were most challenged prior to COVID. So if there's a way to make a stronger statement about our support for those schools, I would lean more towards option three. Thank you.
Thank you. Number Kay. Would any other board members like to comment on option one? Or any other option? And I can always move towards other options as Michelle, as Member Kay stated that she has questions on option three.
Any other hands, Alicia?
No, sir.
Uh, yes.
Member Wellborn was physically raising her hand.
I wasn't allowed to use any of those toys anymore.
Go ahead, Member Wellborn.
President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, and members of the board. And I'm, I'm moved by the evolution of our conversation on this topic. And it's, it's very clear that we don't like this requirement from the legislature. And it's not a popular concept. And I don't feel that anybody, my sense from what I've heard is that having one school on the list isn't even fair. Because the data is not reliable. Because the circumstances were extraordinary. And it's, we, it's in line with the idea that we never intended to have any kind of judgment, hence the original recommendation. When we recommended not to have grades, well, this is pretty close to having grades when you, when you pick out certain schools and you say they had subpar performance. So my thought, I have, I have a wild thought. I think we should put all the schools on the list. And the statement that goes with that is that they all suffered from COVID and had below average performance, their performance was below what they've typically done. And we should understand that. And they all need help to recover across the board. I have as much of an issue picking out even 7%. And even though that's a very, very small number. But are, are we not just dumping on the same old schools again that are handicapped and trying to cope with low income population or minorities or whatnot? I just feel that the sense that I'm hearing is this reluctance to identify anybody because of the circumstances that they've been dealing with and continue to deal with. So it's, one, it's possible to have a list with zero schools on it, it's possible to have a list with 10 schools on it, and it's possible to have a list on it with all schools on it. And we could also consider that because the data is not reliable, it's not appropriate to have a mathematically calculated list. That's flawed to begin with. So these are some random thoughts I have. I appreciate all the thinking that has gone on since Monday's conversation. And right now, I'm, I'm, I'm hard pressed to support any options.
Thank you, Member Wellborn. Dr. Core, is your hand up? Okay, it is not. I do not see any.
Thank you, Alicia.
You're welcome. I do not see any other hands. So President Narducci, would you like me to go to option two and have a discussion on option two or?
I think, I think, I think we've had, I mean, I think everybody presented their, their, their assessment of how they wanted to approach it completely. And it evolved from option one to a lot of discussion about option three and then some other alternatives. And, and I think the discussion was very fruitful. And I, I really like the idea of bringing whatever, and I don't know if there's a cover letter or not. But whatever we have in our asterisk that basically points to the three points about the, the data, which should be obvious to everybody, that, you know, we continue to, we continue to get data, you know, our presentation from the, from, from the, I call them the statistical brain trust that we heard from on Monday. You know, it's, it's a continuing operation for them, and I think they look at it. If, I might be remembering incorrectly, they said something about a three to five year project or something that they're looking at this COVID, COVID impact, and Wendy's shaking her head, and I think, I think, and please correct me, I don't want, for the record, say anything wrong. So having, having something that says the data is incomplete or, or possibly insufficient. And then having that, the, the data should not, the board, none of the board members expect the data to be used for punitive purposes, because this is really just an assessment. And then thirdly, that the COVID impacts were disparate throughout our entire community and our, our communities and states. And po- po- you know, and, and we know that they have been heavily disparate on, on various other demographics in the state. So if we can bring that somewhere to more recognition, and if it's in a cover letter that we have to provide, that's fine too. But, but, but I really like, I like that idea. And it also seems to me that we probably could look at a motion at this point and then further discussion as we need to. And the motion that, that, that I see from the discussion that we just had and the points that I took down would be a motion on any of the options, but if, but I feel as if, Michelle, you have your hand up, is your hand up to discuss something?
Yes, I'm sorry, President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, I do have a couple of more clarifying questions to get a better understanding of option three. It would be helpful to have that maybe before a motion.
Sure, we, we could, we could do that.
Okay, President Narducci, Superintendent Hoffman, and members. I'm not sure who I'm asking the question to, if it's Wendy or Alicia. Executive Director Williams, one question I have on the proficiency side of the calculation. I believe there's been historically a penalty for being under the threshold on the participation rate, so the take rate of the test. How, what does this proficiency calculation represent? Is it, is there a penalty for low? For lower take rates or not? And if so, did that have an impact?
President Narducci Superintendent Hoffman, member K and members. For this calculation, we use the calculations as we would in A through F. So we did use the one that had the penalty applied. But we also use the weighted proficiency as we do in A through F as that bottom. And so whether it was um, single year Faye or weighted Faye. We took the higher of the two.
Okay, so schools weren't penalized if they had a lower take rate? Was that roughly the outcome?
They would have been penalized because we use the actual A through F component. We put in the public file, the non-penalty file. The non-penalty for reference. And when it came to the accountability calculation and this calculation, we did use the one with penalty.
Do you have an assessment of whether that would have had an impact on, did it have a material impact? Um, on schools?
President Narducci Superintendent Hoffman, uh, member Kate, it would have an impact. I don't have those numbers for you right now. But if we did rerun it with that column we added with no penalty, it would change the results. I wouldn't be, you'd still identify the same number of schools, but more than likely the schools in there would change.
Okay, President Narducci Superintendent Hoffman, members, Wendy, thank you. Um, that one's helpful. I have a second. Question, if that's okay. Um. The. 12th, so we, if I understand, I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. We identified the 12%. 150 schools from the prior year as the, the DNF schools. We carried that over. And then. What we applied rule two possibly, which was essentially to remove any schools that previously had an A, B, or C. Letter grade. Um. Were there any other options explored within that? I mean, it seems like the goal was to make the list as small as possible to filter out the list. Um. So we have fewer number of schools than prior years. I'm just wondering if there were any other methodologies used. Aside from rule two as it currently is.
Alicia, would you like me to go ahead and answer what kind of other things we took into consideration?
Okay, we attempted to look at different components. We also uh, tried to look at. Where schools fell within the mathematics of the proficiency and growth. Calculations. But when we continue to have conversations around. The longitudinal and historical look between the three years we've had accountability. We did not have accountability in 1920. Uh, although we don't have summative letter grades in 2021. We wanted to determine if there was a way to further identify the 150 schools. In a way in which it aligned with the longitudinal data that we've had thus far with the accountability system as. I have known, I have no um. Belief that. The accountability system. This current school year forward would change significantly. Uh, through the legislative process. So by utilizing the DNF and rule number two for K eight. It provides that longitudinal data across. The 2021 school year.
Okay, President Narducci Superintendent Hoffman and members, thank you for that. I think that's. That's in addition to, again, identifying any schools and I do. Agree with several comments of member well born in terms of. Not believing that any school should be on that list. Um, I think what I'm struggling with in this particular option and having difficult time getting past is. We are applying a different set of standards. So we're looking at 2021 data. We've been asked to identify the lowest or below average performing. During COVID, during the pandemic. And we're using multi-year. Data or previous letter grades to put a filter. On that list. So. I, I'm struggling with the additional qualifier. And then at the same time, though, if the goal is to. Make the list as small as possible, this is one way that gets us there. But it, I'm struggling with the methodology still. I, I don't have any other questions on it.
And member K and for the, for the board's uh, knowledge, rule number two can be taken off uh, K eight if the board wishes to be so.
President Narducci, I have a question.
Hey, please, please proceed, member over. I'm sorry, I'm having uh, internet instability, so I'll be kicking in and out. Go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, President Narducci Superintendent Hoffman and members of the board. Um. Member K, I, I have a issue with uh, rule two as, as well. Um, and I'm curious. Uh, in particular, because um. It seems like we're um, penalizing those that have previously been at the bottom of the list. Again. And we're giving a hall pass. To the uh, schools that have previously done well. And one of the things that really stuck in my mind in Monday's data presentation was that. The data said that learning loss occurred all across schools, all across Arizona, that A schools, B schools, C schools and whatnot. So I think it's, it's, it seems a bit arbitrary to, to, to. Allow the A, B, and C schools from prior years to escape this list. Um. It actually makes it a little bit less representative of where the issues fall, where the difficulties were. Um, seen, seen. So I don't uh, know if. Um, there's another way to get the, the list smaller, which uh, may be people's interest, but. This seems to be somewhat arbitrary and unequal unfair. To those um, at the bottom of the list from prior years.
Okay, member Welborn, uh, Dr. Core.
You know, folks, our, our unfortunate reality is we're, we're, we're trying to make rational decisions ba- made on bad data, right? So eh, there, there's no good answer here. We can, we can play with that methodology until. We take the test again, right? It, it, we, our students took that test in horrible conditions during a pandemic. And we went into it with a good faith effort. When we said it, we meant it. We want to find out how our students are doing. We're not going to give grades. No one will be penalized. We didn't ask for this, but this is our task. So now our, I, I firmly believe, you know, we can fiddle with the, we can fiddle with it. Because we can all look at it and say it's not right, what, what we have to do, but we have to do it. And, and so, so my point is. Let's do the least amount of harm. Um. And move on.
You know, with that, with that, Dr. Core, I mean, thank you. And thanks for the comments, the recent comments by, by member K and member Welborn. Um, and all the comments that preceded that. I'm, I'm going to call for a motion. Uh, and we'll go from there. I'm going to call for a motion with respect to option three in light of the comments that I heard. Uh, around, around about, and then we'll go from there. So do I have a motion to approve option three as the op- option to identify schools? For below average performance in the 2020, 2021 school year? And direct the Department of Education to release the final list of identified below average performance schools. By November 1st, 2021. And. Emphasize the three points that were uh. Identified by uh, member Ruiz as well as supported by others, which already exist, I understand, on the. Uh, asterisk or additional public file, but we want to emphasize those either in a cover letter. Or someone, somewhere else where it could be more conspicuous as this is provided. That was a long verbiage, but you can't condense it down. Have a motion in that regard. Go ahead, timeout, Alicia.
Um, if the board chooses to motion option three. Um, I will need to understand whether it's the bottom 15 or 30, nine, 12 schools.
And then I will. Add a separate motion, Alicia, or can we wrap it into one?
You can wrap it into one. Uh. You can just say to approve option three with the nine, 12 as the bottom 15 or the bottom 30. Then I also need to know if you want to include AOI schools.
So, so with respect to the AOI schools.
President, they are currently in the public file. So option three right now utilizes the public file.
Yeah.
And member Baker has his hand up.
Member Baker.
President Narducci Superintendent. And members of the board, I, I think procedurally it'd be easiest or best for us to knock one thing off at a time. So let's. I, I suggest we vote on option three and then deal with the, with the other issues related to that separately.
I agree, member Baker. So we, we have a motion. With respect to option three with the additional uh, necessary three items to emphasize. Do I have a motion in that regard?
I have a question.
Well, let's, we'll proceed with a motion first and then we'll get into a discussion as nee- as needed, member Welborn.
Okay.
So moved, this is Daniel.
And do I have a second regarding that motion?
I'll second, Bruceard.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second and any discussion, member Welborn.
Uh, I just want a question is for clarification. When we uh, have a motion to approve option three, does that include rule one and rule two?
We, Alicia.
Yes, President Narducci, member Welborn, yes, it does. Uh, Melissa, can you pull up that PowerPoint presentation so we can show option three and the mathematical equations for the four models, please? Equations for the four models, please.
So this would be, go ahead, sorry. Alicia, did you want to explain anything?
Next slide, Melissa. This is option three. These are the rules. Rules for traditional K eight, rules for traditional nine, 12. Next slide, Melissa. Option three rules for alternative nine, 12. Rules for non-typical hybrid model. You can go back one side, Melissa. Thank you.
So that would be the motion. This would be the content of the, the reference for the motion that was just moved on and seconded. Just this slide right here for rule one and rule two. Is there any discussion regarding that motion?
President Narducci, do we need to spell out what that, I'm going to call it our um, state board intent? There's legislative intent and I think we all talked about our state board intent in it. I think member Ruiz did a very good job outlining that. Does that need to be in the motion?
Uh, we added, I added that language to the initial.
Okay, so it's, so it's rules plus that, plus that verbiage.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
It would be conspicuous either in a cover letter and or in the, in the public file.
Yeah, I, I would just. As conspicuous as we can, as, as, because I think this board came out pretty strongly on that. And I would just. Ask that we make it really clear.
Okay, thank you. So with, with this, Alicia, let's do, let's do a, a rule call vote.
Yes.
For each one and we'll go from there.
Okay, so to remind the members of the motion, the motion is to approve option three. Um, as presented on the slides. To identify schools for below average performance in the 2021 school year, direct the Department of Education to release a final list of identified below average performance schools by November 1st, 2021. And emphasize the three points made by member Ruiz on additional public file narratives and on a cover letter. That motion was made by Dr. Core. It was seconded by member Bruceard. Give me one moment. Member Baker, your vote, please.
Yes.
Member Burton?
Yes.
Superintendent Hoffman?
Hi.
Member K?
No. Can I explain my vote?
Yes, you may.
Um, again, I have a fundamental disagreement with any identification. I, and I recognize we're under a time crunch, but I'm. Struggling, I, member Welborn used the term arbitrary and it does feel a little bit arbitrary. That's second. Rule that's applied to the elementary schools. And at the same time, I recognize. That applying, not applying it uh, makes the list larger. So um, I'm struggling with the entire. Um, system methodology calculation and the requirement to have a list. Thank you.
Thank you, member Kate. Dr. Mack? Doesn't look like Dr. Mack is no, is no longer on the call. Dr. Robbins is not present. Member Ruiz?
I'm going to explain my vote.
Yeah, sir, what, sir, what is your vote?
I'm going to explain it.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to vote. A reluctant eye. And. You know, my heart is, is a no. But. But it's just one of those votes that just. It's not fair. It's not just. But we. We were given the duty to provide a list. I. If I would, uh, you know, I would have preferred maybe the motion doc that uh, member Welborn made. That has put everybody on the list. The reality is, I think this, this decision ends up being arbitrary. Uh, because the, the board is a, is putting those three caveats on there. That's the reason I'm supporting it. And the purpose is. The, the reason I think for those three caveats is that if any of these schools are punished, that they have recourse. Uh, through the courts to be able to come back to that language and to this. To the language that we're going to put in there and be able to show that. These uh, the numbers weren't good, that the data was flawed. And that there shouldn't be any punitive action taken on any school.
But remember.
Vote I.
Thank you. Uh, member Welborn?
Um, I'm going to vote no. And um. I'm voting no because um. Well, first of all, I, I, you know, I disagree with the assignment altogether. Uh, like many people have expressed. Um, and I regret. That there is going to be a list. That. Um. In my view unfairly identifies. Um. The below average performers. And I just uh. I can't live with. What supporting something that I think is unfair.
Thank you, member Welborn. Member Bruceard?
Yes.
Dr. Core?
Yes.
President Narducci?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to two.
Thank you. And appreciate everybody's uh, input and positions. Now we'll need to move on to uh, and, and the, the two other aspects that need to be looked at with respect to. This. Motion and that deals with the alter- the AOI schools. Oh my goodness. There we go. Putting it up on the board. Let's go ahead, Alicia, take control.
Sure. Uh, so President Narducci, members of the board, since item three has been uh, chosen to identify below average. Performance. Next slide, Melissa. Be noticed in the traditional nine, 12 model.
Be noticed in the traditional nine twelve model, the state board decision, the board has to determine if it's the bottom seven percent or the bottom thirteen percent, which translates into the bottom fifteen schools or the bottom thirty schools. Next slide, Melissa. Next slide, Melissa. The second decision the board needs to make, as I stated previously, AOIs are not included in the public file. Because AOIs have not been included in accountability previously. If the board would like AOI schools to be included in the identification of below average performance in the model that they fit best, the board will have to make a motion to include AOI schools. If the board wishes to include AOI schools, they will need to include rule number three, which deals with K eight AOI schools. If you recall from the public comments, the associations did not want AOI schools included.
And we, and again, I'm still having some internet instability, so please, if I, if I cut out or if I have to shut off, Daniel, please take over or Alicia take over. Let's deal with AOI, can we deal with AOI first? And I'm going to give just my, my, my impression here. Is that I'm not sure why we would include AOI schools now if we didn't include them before. Especially in light of the confusion that we just had with respect to the regular schools and the data. So that, that's my view, but I'm willing to hear anybody's motion on this and discussion on it because as usual, I'm, I'm open and can change my position and get it, get it, get it educated.
Member Baker has, hand up.
Go ahead.
Member Baker, go ahead.
President Arducci, Superintendent Hoffman, members of the board. I'm, I'm willing to pass on this, but I, I do believe very strongly with more and more students going to AOI schools. We, they need to be, they need to be in the accountability system, just like any other school. They cannot get a pass on being accountable for whether or not their students are performing. So I'm willing to take a pass this year, but I, I want to make it clear that long-term AOI schools must be held accountable like any other school. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Baker, I know that you were on the phone. Did you want to state your position on fifteen, the bottom fifteen or the bottom thirty for nine twelve?
Thank you. In light of the discussion of making this as small as possible, I would support the role of this on each rate. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm, I'm going to have to jump on my plane here a little soon, so I'm probably going to drop out. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Baker. Member Bruceard?
Thank you, Director Williams, President Arducci, and Superintendent Board. I'm, I do agree that we need some oversight with AOIs. This is not the year to be rating them, I don't think. And so many AOIs came into existence within the last year. If it had been any other year, we would be doing and not rated anyway for their first year up and running. So I just thought I would let my voice be heard. I do not think we should be including AOIs in these results. Thank you.
As, thank you, Member Bruceard. As Member Baker has stated that he is getting on his plane and we've heard from Member Baker and Member Bruceard. Similarly, do any board members have the opposite opinion that AOIs should be included? Or that the nine twelve noted bottom should be thirty nine twelve schools?
I have a question for clarification.
Yes, number.
Just to remind ourselves, the decision of whether it's seven percent or thirteen percent, was that tied to the schools that did not submit their CCRIs?
Thank you, Member Welborn. After, so when you look at the nine twelve, rule number two that did not submit CCRIs, if the board went with the bottom fifteen schools for nine twelve, only one school would be added with rule number two. If the board went with the bottom thirty for nine twelve, all schools who did not submit their CCRI data would be included.
But these percentages, seven percent or thirteen percent, I'm, I beg your pardon, but I'm a little confused. So in the methodology that was done before was to look at the percentage of schools in historically that were in the DNF and to use that percentage to apply to this population. But the question was outstanding. What do we do with the CCRI schools, meaning they have incomplete data? And, and so I, I'm confused as to where we came up with the seven percent or the thirteen percent and how it relates to CCRI. Was it traditionally the number was seven percent, but that means only one school that did not submit their CCRI would be affected? So that we're sort of, they, apparently they had an A, B, or C before, so they get the hall pass? Is that how this, we're doing this?
President Arducci, Member Welborn, letter grades were not included in the nine twelve rules.
Okay.
The seven percent is aligned, is aligned with the, with the five percent of schools with enough data who had DNF schools in the eighteen nineteen accountability system. The reason that this, the seven percent aligns with the bottom fifteen nine twelve schools. The schools that failed to submit CCRI, even if ran through, they get a zero for CCRI. There was one school that still had high enough proficiency points to kick them out of the bottom fifteen, but still had a zero in CCRI. Whereas the other schools still had very, you know, they had low proficiency and then a zero with, with CCRI as well. So hence, rule number two brings that school over that had higher proficiency scores but did not submit CCRI data. The bottom thirty schools, which is thirteen percent, that option was added because after the September meeting, there were some questions on whether or not fifteen nine, nine twelve schools was enough nine twelve schools to be captured in the below average performance identification.
So it's the seventies percent or the thirteen percent is not tied to whether or not they submitted CCRI data?
Member Welborn, I, I'm sorry, but I don't understand the question.
So I'm sorry, am I not asking it very clearly? I apologize for that. So I, my understanding of what you just explained is that whether we go with seven percent or thirteen percent, those numbers were not tied to whether or not a school submitted CCRI. There's no relationship. There's, okay, 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 that's all, that's all I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Alicia. Thank you, Member Welborn. So we've got, we've got the motion regarding option three that is passed. We have these, you know, we've heard three comments. I'm wondering, and, and the, the comments that, and correct me if I'm wrong, are that motion to not include AOI and that all valid reasons to, to, to not include them, but to look into including them potentially next year. That's not part of the motion, but I mean, I agree with Cal in that regard, of course. And then not including the bottom thirty because let's keep the number as small as possible. That's what I, that's what I hear the momentum is going. Is there anybody on, that, on the, on the board that wants to give some discussion contrary to that? And I think that's what you were asking for, right, Alicia? Okay. Do you see any hands up?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Can we move ahead to a motion that would not include AOI this year? And not include the bottom thirty in this process? With more clarity, Alicia, tell me what I need to do besides that as a motion. You're on mute.
Sorry, I was, I was trying to write a clear motion. Utilizing option three to identify below average performance schools pursuant to pursuant to what? Pursuant to House Bill twenty four oh two. Use the bottom fifteen nine twelve schools and do not include AOI schools across all models.
And, and, and is there any reason to qualify, do not use AI, 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 you know what I'm talking about? AOI schools this year versus just what we said? This way we're not impacted by next year if we decide to use them?
President Arducci, it would not be impacted for next year because AOIs are on the schedule to be in the accountability system.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you. Okay, can you repeat the motion and then we'll see if anybody wants to offer that, please?
Sure. Utilizing option three to identify below average performance schools pursuant to House Bill two four oh two. Use the bottom fifteen or bottom seven percent of nine twelve schools and do not include AOI schools across all models.
Thank you. Do you have a motion in that regard?
So moved, this is Daniel.
And thank you, Daniel. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Member Bruceard.
Thank you, Member Bruceard. Appreciate that very much. Any further discussion? Alicia, could we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Member Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Burton?
Yes.
Thank you. Superintendent Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Kay?
No, can I explain my vote?
Yes, go ahead.
While I am supportive of not having, not including AOIs. I, I, as I said before, just to reiterate, I do not have enough confidence in the underlying data to support the decision or the motion.
Thank you, Member Kay. Dr. Mack is not on the call. Dr. Robbins is not on the call. Member Ruiz?
I'm going to vote no, and I'm going to explain, my vote is for the same reasons that Member Kay outlined. I'm not going to support it.
Thank you, Member Ruiz. Member Welborn?
No.
Thank you, Member Welborn. Would you like to explain your vote?
I think it's already been explained.
Thank you, Member Welborn. Member Bruceard?
Yes.
Dr. Core?
Yes.
President Arducci?
Yes.
Six to three, the motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. Appreciate all of the comments and discussion. We all know that this is, the whole COVID experience has created different issues for different people. And we went into this knowing that this would be a difficult assessment. We know that we're, we needed to do what we did by law. I appreciate everybody's comments with respect to the data, the, the assessments and the decision that we had, had to make, but we had to make the decision by law. And we, we do appreciate moving forward in this regard. And I do hope, I, I, I really do hope this, that the information that we received on Monday and continue to receive from all our experts will actually put all of us in the state in a better position to deal with the ramifications of, of the pandemic as well as the ongoing issues that we will confront despite and, you know, notwithstanding the pandemic. Because I think the data that we're going to get and the information that we're going to get from all that is going to be helpful to all of us in moving forward to, 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 to help all of our schools, teachers, and pupils. With that.
President Arducci.
President Core.
No, but he was saving goodbye, he had to jump off.
Goodbye to President Core.
But Superintendent Hoffman has her hand up.
Oh, sorry, Superintendent Hoffman.
Thank you, President Arducci, board members. First, just want to acknowledge all the really thoughtful discussion today, that this was a really challenging task for all of us that I feel similarly, you know, around the issue of putting any schools on this list. So just wanted to, to say that, that I really respect the viewpoints of, that have been raised by Member Welborn, Member Kay, Member Ruiz, and the concerns around this process that this, you know, these were not decisions made lately. The other thing I wanted to bring up, you know, we talked about in the cover letter, the, the three points, which I also agree with, but the more I was thinking about the language about that this should not be used in a way that's punitive. I would suggest that we even consider or add flipping it a little bit and rather than saying not punitive, that we be a little bit more specific, that we would want, like if this, again, we don't want the list used, but but ultimately, not punitive means more resources or funding or something that schools could opt into. Rather than, when we say not punitive, I think punitive can mean different things to different people. And what someone might think of as an extra support for a school, like could be in someone else's mind, something that's, you know, punitive. So I, I just think that there could be more clarity that what this, what this struggling schools need is funding and resources and, and but, but sometimes extra help can be perceived as punitive. Or, you know, like people coming in to tell you what to do can be perceived as punitive. So I just wanted to make that point around, you know, when we're saying not punitive, that people could have different definitions of what that looks like in, in practice. So I would, I just wanted, I don't know, just maybe more discussion is needed on that point. But I, I like the intent behind it, so that's all I have on that.
Thank you, Superintendent Hoffman. Just to the board members, now I will work with President Arducci for our press release that we're also working collaboratively with Superintendent Hoffman and the department's communication team to incorporate what was discussed today at the meeting. As I'm sitting here and listening to members as well, I think there is opportunity in December during the board's legislative agenda for next year to have a more thoughtful conversation and discussion around the board's viewpoints and belief of any of the schools identified today, but then also all schools, as we know, all schools were impacted by COVID. So I just wanted to put that on the record as well, President Arducci.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Hoffman. Thank you, Director Williams. And I also think our discussion on record on Monday evidenced exactly those, that, that, that framework of thought as well with respect to how we wanted to proceed in, in, in all of this process. So that, that's good. So Alicia, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is any, any additional public, any comments or go to the order type stuff.
President Arducci, I do not, I do not have any, any updates except, that's it. Yes, I don't have any updates.
Thank you. This is the first time I've had unstable internet the entire time since the beginning of COVID. So that's why I've been cutting in and out. that's why I've been cutting in and out, and I apologize, so with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion by Member Kay, and do I have a second? I have a second by Member Burton, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much, there are none opposed and thanks for all the work that went into this and for all the thoughtful comments, thank you so much, have a good rest of the day.
Thank you. Thank you.